Welcome to the January 17th, 2023 City of Angels City Council meeting. Rose, if you put, um, she, uh, Bro.
Mayor Bro, Mayor Herman.
Present.
Vice Mayor Moncada.
Present.
Council members Tiscornia.
I am new, present.
Council members Brolio.
Present.
Council member Sharato.
Present.
Staff is present.
Thank you. Number two, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item number three, I'm looking for approval of the agenda as posted or any amendments that need to be made. Anybody have any corrections or amendments? Any members of the public to amend or correct the agenda, Rose?
No.
The only one on right now is Rose. Okay, so we'd be looking for a motion.
We're looking for a motion.
Alvin?
I'll second.
Council member Moncada, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vice Mayor. Aye.
Vice Mayor Moncada?
Thank you.
You'll get it. I'm gonna have a hard time too. New names.
Um, item number four, public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes per person. Rose, do you have anybody online? I don't see anyone here that's interested in public comment. None? Okay, moving on, we're gonna go to consent agenda. Looks like we have four items on consent. Does anybody have any comments or any reason to pull any items of consent? I have a question on item C. Okay, so number, or letter C is being pulled by, uh, by council member Sharato. Anything else? We'll be looking for a motion for items A, B, and D.
So.
Council member Brolio? Looking for a second?
I'll second.
Council member Sharato? So those have passed.
All in favor?
We have a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nope.
Okay, council member Sharato. Item C.
Yeah, on item C, I had a question about, um, item F, uh, what is it? Something F on the back page, um, 8F. It said that the motion to approve resolution number 2305 as written, but it doesn't say who made that motion, it just says seconded by, uh, council member Brolio. We can pull that completely and I'll fix it and bring it back because I would have to go back and look at my notes.
Okay.
Quick. So we'll table it for the next meeting.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you, I picked on that.
Yeah.
The proofreader of the year.
It happens sometimes.
Moving on to regular agenda item A. Approve resolution 2308 authorizing a purchase of APN 060006006 for the Utica Park expansion and authorizing the city administrator to sign, authorize, and have reported all relevant documents and agreements, Amy Augustine.
Mayor, council members, this was previously a closed session item. An offer was made to the seller who accepted the council's offer. There have been two appraisals done on it. There's been a phase one site assessment. Today, our agreement was signed with the state. So, um, upon approval, we would open escrow and hopefully have a quick escrow and take possession of the property. We also held a walk-through today as part of our request for proposals for the playground, and that will be closing on the 30th, so we hope to have a selection to your next meeting. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I got a question. So we had budgeted $400,000. We bought it for 320 and they're saying escrow fees of 30, so that's a $50,000 savings. Is there any plans at the moment to put that $50,000 somewhere else or just gonna hold it as a buffer as things will go over and things will go?
It's an overall. Yeah. And so things.
So it's just a product. You didn't have to go for, okay.
Yeah.
My only comment is that I wanna make sure that we, um, somehow put signs up that it's, it's still not to be for public access. I don't want anybody walking around on the, on the structures and falling and getting hurt. So some sort of fencing, or even if it's construction fencing, that I know will likely go up sooner than later. That's my only comment. Once we accept ownership, I wanna make sure we're protecting ourselves.
So once, um, once the contract is signed with the state, which I signed it this morning, and then we're just waiting for them to finalize and hopefully get the exhuming contract back, then we can go ahead and move forward with, uh, San Juan.
Conservation Core.
Conservation Core.
For cleanup.
And they can start cleaning up. And then part of that, um, they were gonna do some fencing within that as well.
Good.
Super important. There are some, anyone who, uh, and I'm sure you're familiar with the trails that go from, uh, Hartway Road down, um, those are not really going to prevent people from getting on that. They just, they just, uh, back on it. Years, I'm sure we're gonna do it.
Okay, anybody else have any comments?
I have one question. All we have to do is put a no trespassing sign right there. I mean, and that.
It wouldn't merit finally.
I just have to reserve that.
Maybe you have no trespassing signs, Amy?
We can do that.
The fence will go up in no time, so that would, that could stay, signs could stay up forever saying no trespassing.
Well, probably not after it's open.
Not, no.
Right, no, I just think it's something quick and easy on those things.
Okay, so moving right along, do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on item 6A?
Nate?
You wanna comment on item 6A, Nate?
No, I'm good.
Any members online, Rose? So bringing that back, we would be looking for a motion to approve the resolution and direct the city administrator.
Motion to approve resolution 23-08.
Motion from council member Brolio?
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Moncada. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes by the. Moving to item 6B, discussion and approval of a fee waiver for the Volunteer Center of Calaveras Banner, Amy Augustine.
Mayor, council members, this is for $255.38. That is the portion that the city spends. Gold Electric has already donated their time to this, which was 270. The Volunteer Center of Calaveras basically acts sort of as a clearinghouse. People who need help, contact them. They also encourage people to volunteer, train them how to volunteer, and they, when somebody needs something and somebody wants to provide volunteer services, they put the two together and there you have it. This basically is just sort of an advertisement to get more people to sign up and volunteer as well as to promote their upcoming, um, Sweetheart Supper fundraiser. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, anybody have any questions for this item?
When is their Sweetheart Supper?
February 11th.
So I more so have a kind of a comment and I guess it could morph into a question, but we seem to continuously be getting these fee waivers, so I'm assuming that the process is people fill out the application, if they can't or don't want to pay, then they are welcome to come to us, which is why we get all these correct. Um, I think we all know where I stand on this, because I've said it multiple times. However, is there any way or how can we go about moving forward to either setting some type of fee schedule, which is plain and simple, you know, either it's this or don't, hey, your banner, that's just my opinion. Um, but to, I just feel like we keep getting these one-off costs, which in the end, I think end up equaling a lot more money. Kind of feels like last month, you know, we got the sign and now it's this banner and next month it's probably gonna be another banner. So I guess my question is more so to Rebecca, can we come up with some type of fee schedule, even if we're allotting X amount of money toward this? Maybe there's some type of parameters that they need to fit in, whether it's other nonprofits that they, um, I don't know. Just different things.
This will actually go away because they will have an alternative.
Yeah.
When we put up our banner posts.
Right, but until that point, it just keeps coming back to us.
Yeah, that which would be up to six months away.
Yeah.
Then they have something that they would, we would direct them, hey, you have a big banner over the highway, then go to our little one where we don't have to charge.
The thing I do like about this is that Gold Electric did donate their portion, so we're not paying them on top of what we need to get at, uh, an ask. Right, I agree, but then I'm also a little frustrated, so where were the only, you know, like on the other ones?
They must have gone to them and asked is what I'm guessing is.
They had.
They directly went to them. They did, and in the past, Gold Electric has donated to them, so.
For this cost? Their, their proponent of, of this?
Yes.
Even, okay. Do you know, are they doing banners throughout the county?
Uh, I am not aware of banners throughout the county. They only mentioned this particular one.
Have they done this in the past?
Yes, they have. This banner.
And how, how long will this banner be up? Two weeks?
Um, two to three. We're actually trying to make it less expensive and time-consuming for everybody by whenever we take something down, put something up. So this, theirs is two to three weeks.
The $255.38 is hard cost of, of our time, our staff time. We have to pick it up somewhere and somehow we can't just make it go away.
No, we have to have, we have to have plugging, yeah, all of that, we have to get a closure from the thousands, have to call in, have to call it in after the, um. So, I mean, we could certainly, uh, set up some sort of a, kind of a, like a community support, um, budget line, I think, on an annual basis.
And open it up maybe for a time period and say.
Well, it's gonna be a not to exceed.
And not to exceed, but, um, if you have a banner you want to go up this year, you have until February 15th to get that in.
It's not just banners though.
Right, so whatever it is, yeah.
So like parade.
We have the signs on.
Yeah.
And then that way we can decide at that point, we've got, say, $5,000, we know we can divvy it up and get.
That makes me feel more comfortable because otherwise I'd feel like it's a question of each time and I wanna make sure that at least I'm being fair.
Yeah.
You know, and so.
And it's hard because we don't see them all.
Right, we get them here, we get them on the line.
It might, it might get people on board with trying to plan their year in advance, but there's still gonna be the one-offs of.
I didn't know, I didn't hear.
Yeah, or this just happened and now I have approval to have this event.
If I'm not mistaken, Amy, we do have a list of the normal ones that we do every single year, correct? You looked at it enough longer, right?
That is correct.
That we, okay.
And it is very difficult to get nonprofits who are composed volunteers to plan ahead.
Well, if that means saving money, I know I said on several boards, I would get on top of that.
Was this one on that list? I can't remember if it was.
This was an add-on?
It wasn't.
In part because of COVID, we've had several of those where the events weren't held for two or three years, and also they're coming back and they're going, oh, when did you implement a fee to cover your costs? It used to be, we just, you know, so there's been a bit of surprise for some. So, I mean, I would say, yeah, just my two cents, you can throw back. Um, I would say nonprofits that promote some sort of a social welfare that benefit the, the city, um, you know, would, would be appropriate. This is the underserving, or an underserved community if they're serving, right?
Right.
Yeah. You just have to be, there has to be a public benefit.
Right.
That's, that's the whole point of it. So there has to be a public benefit nexus for any sort of donation made by the city.
Right, so any money they spend on a banner takes away directly from the underserved in our community for it. That's the correlation, that is the difference than some of our.
And we still have this, I'm going back to the last meeting, we have a budget for this month right now.
Well.
Because we can do the.
We have the 50,000. We have the 55,000 that we.
Economic development stimulus helping, right? So that could fit back in this, this 255 could come out of that pool of money.
And here we have Marty Crane. We're on your item.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
I would have been here on time, but Red Cross messed with me.
Yeah.
How'd you go up there today? I'm sorry, well, I'm.
You go, you go. Go to the podium if anyone has questions.
Oh, yeah. I'm always afraid to turn this off, but maybe I've been three hours.
We are, um, we are ready for public comment and we, and we guys.
No, open up public comment. They can always come back.
So let's go ahead and open the.
I think you're up. You walk through the door, you're up.
And the podium is right there behind you.
How are you? Hi, Amy. Amy. We've been talking a lot and I go, oh, please, you're.
You're okay.
You're good.
You're good.
Good evening. Um, as executive, I wrote this because I tend to go down rabbit holes and your timing is short, so, um, so executive, as executive director of the Volunteer Center of Calaveras County since 2001, where they're about, I am so honored to work with, um, many, many others in service to our communities because that's what all our partners, that's a requirement. Do you have community stamp on your heart? We wanna play. So partnering with Calaveras Unified School District and engaging the public, we've been developing a volunteer campus on the lower terrace of Santa Clara Elementary so as to be ready to provide support and be part of the solution in a public emergency whenever and wherever possible. From the beginning in the early 1980s up until COVID burst onto the scene, we administered a volunteer transportation program, ensuring folks could stay in their homes for as long as was safely possible. This not only connected them to healthcare and their daily life destinations, it was instrumental in fighting the dangers of isolation. And, um, we all know that without transportation, there is no healthcare. So, anyway, but we've been working on that for years and the hospital's been fabulous. Because we could not physically distance in our personal vehicles and the toll COVID took on our volunteer drivers, we discussed our COVID concerns with expertise within public health and Red Cross. The, in the interest of public safety, we decided to err on the side of caution and discontinue the volunteer transportation program, and it was not an easy decision. As a snapshot of the Volunteer Center's engagement with residents of Angels Camp, we can share that 53 Angels Camp residents received multiple rides, I mean, many, sometimes every week, sometimes once a month, um, multiple rides to critical destinations over the course of the past five years. Six volunteer drivers, um, are or were residents of Angels Camp, so we've been pretty involved with Angels Camp. We started a dozen years or so with a, in a weedy field and one leaky portable classroom and no plumbing. Since then, the community has provided a driveway, graded the site, moved and upgraded portable classrooms, including concrete foundations. Everything from the covert, the driveway, the grading construction, the toilet paper and the paint on the walls has been provided or donated by the community. Staying true to our mission to address unmet needs in the county, we invited the Optimist Club and the Mancunian Writers Press to share our office space at no cost. Our American Red Cross Gold Country Chapter needed a permanent place, centrally located facility from which to meet, train, and rapidly respond, so we also invited them to join us as we worked to provide the missing connective tissue between the volunteers and local efforts that need their help. We are proud to say that Red Cross moved in with us three and a half years ago. The American Red Cross responds whenever and wherever needed to alleviate human suffering in the face of disaster, as I'm sure you probably know. In the past years, our Gold Country Red Cross Chapter has responded to 42 DAT calls. Those are disaster action teams that we deployed, home fires, all different, um, emergencies. We opened 26 shelters, some for just a few hours, but they were opened nonetheless, provided nine canteen services, completed 13 exercises with either local fire or cow fire, and the fire department allowed us to train CERT and Red Cross volunteers in one of their days 31 times. The fire department, oh, and local Angels Camp businesses supported our sheltering missions with donated foods and goods, um, or at a reduced cost, and the list goes on. We could only, locally, we could only go back five years in that database, but that's what we got for there. The Optimist Club, Mancunian Writers Press, Red Cross, and your Volunteer Center continue to believe that real success is always dependent upon the partnerships we cultivate. Thanks to all who continue to help when and where they can, thanks to Gold Electric for waiving their fees to assist nonprofits' efforts in the county, they do it every year for us, um, and thanks to you, our Angels Camp City Council, for considering a waiver of your banner fees. Our website is calaverasvolunteer.com. It's singular because it only takes one to make a difference, so go be fabulous. And I brought copies of this in case if anyone's. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can just, I just.
Any, any other comment, councilman, somebody online to us? Do you have any other banners being hung up around the county at the same time as this one? Do you have the one like in Arnold or?
We, we love to, um, invest in, afford more banners because they have such a wonderful message.
Right.
You know?
Okay.
And so even if we don't, it's not for an event, it just makes people sigh, especially for. So if we, if you know of another place where we could put one, we'd like to know about that.
There's none.
Nobody, okay. Okay, so bringing that back here to council, um, the only thing I'd like to say, Marty, is you did make it a request, uh, for us to waive our banner fees, and I think I just wanna reiterate that these are not necessarily banner fees, these are fixed costs. These are, these are costs that the city is mastering, her regardless, I think it's wonderful that you've already reached out to Gold Electric and, and looks like you've got $270 in your favor already. So, um, the $255 here, that is still a hard cost for the city, um, I do not find that that is, um, adequate to, to be speaking to our economic development, that just doesn't fit the profile. You mentioned, uh, councilmember Tiscornia initially at the, at the last meeting, that's not what I envision our economic development to be. Um, it is definitely an outsourced, it is definitely, um, like, giving back to the community, but it is not, doesn't fit the profile for me and not a bucket of money. So that's the way I'd like to address this, is by speaking to that, to that nature.
Do you have another, what, director raised my hand?
No, go ahead.
Okay, do we have another way or another source of taking this money from somewhere else? Just because, I mean, I agree with, with basically what I said at the last meeting, that I just don't find this to be economic development spending, but if we find another place we can pull it out of, that's fine, but I, yeah, that's my.
So I, I guess, I guess I would say not everything that Destination Angels Camp was doing had to do with economic development either. I mean, some of the things that they were doing had to do with, um, social outreach for various programs that didn't have anything to do with economic development. So, um, you know, at the end of the day, we're halfway through the fiscal year, we budgeted $55,000. Even if they came up with a contract, um, you still have, what am I, $27,000, um, for the second half of the fiscal year to do something with. You can change the flavor to whatever you want, there just has to be a public benefit to that money.
So.
Okay, well, then I think they need to change what we call it.
Well, right now, it's just a line item for Destination Angels Camp, that's what it's called.
Okay, that's all it's listed as?
That's all it says. It's under a, it's under a budget called Community Support.
Right, it's just, it does not need to spend on economic development, right? And remind, it doesn't have to be spent on economic development by itself, so for me, Gold Electric's weighed their portion. Go ahead.
Yeah, community support is a much better use of verbiage, in my opinion.
Right.
I totally think it's a community support issue. I don't think that it's an economic development issue.
Right, when we think back to the survey that we just went through, one of the things that, um, was highlighted was the, um, like, safety, the safety in our community, and that definitely provides safety for our elderly and who can't get around, and that's one of the big, that's one of our.
We don't have that driver program anymore, but we support the Red Cross in all of those efforts.
Gotcha.
So.
I think it's very, really, oh, glad we.
So, no, so.
Pretty much, I would.
No, no, so for me, we can spend this pool of money kind of however we want. I mean, it's just a pool of money out there in economic development, stimulus, I mean, however we want to, I think. Gold has weighed their portion, electric, Jim, which is awesome, and it's not just helping this, it's helping Red Cross Optimists, um, for 255 bucks, I think it's well-served in our community. So, there's my two cents.
Um, really quickly, the only comment that I wanna make is, I think it's more so for me in my brain, is, so, we're not at 55,000 anymore, correct? Because we gave some of that money last meeting?
Yeah, so it's like 53,000. No. So I think, uh, no, it's like still 54, because they were, we were doing.
We did two-thirds.
No, we did two-thirds, yeah.
So it's more so just talking out loud or thinking out loud, um, that if, so that, like, what we're gonna look at in the next six months to be like, hey, whoever comes at us for money for posters and banners or whatever it is that we can just, like, I guess in my brain, what I'm thinking is for the rest of the year, is that what we're gonna budget or play with? Just act by.
I don't know. Or they might wanna put something out to the community saying, hey, we've got the funding, do we need to, do we need to do this? We need like, screw stuff downtown, like, I don't know.
Cause I, I'm just thinking that while we're talking about this and we're saying, oh, we've got 55,000, we've got 55,000, if I'm somebody out there who's listening, not that a whole bunch of people listen to our meetings, but then it's like, oh, well, they have 55,000, well, I need 25, so who's to say that I don't show up at your next meeting and say, hey, I need this money?
It still has to be for public benefit.
Right.
It has to benefit the City of Angels.
But that's part of my wanting parameters to go out, so that way that people can know that they can come to us, we have money, we're willing to share this money and spend it for your benefit, but it's not just, hey, this is free for all, does that make sense?
Yeah.
I think that's where my biggest concern with all this, especially going into this item, came from.
And I, and I agree with you. And I agree with you on that, um, our fiscal year starts June, no, July 1st. I feel like that's a good starting point for that, unfortunately.
Right.
Because we're already almost in a February meeting.
Pretty much, yeah.
I mean, we'll have to agree on another, we can keep it for the rest of the, for the rest of the year and roll it over into next year.
Yeah. No, I know, I'm just saying, I'm just thinking that from the perspective of an outside source to, you know.
Councilmember Tiscornia.
Yeah, we just pick the able, able leg as community support then.
Right.
That's, that's my, this is late.
That is the budget.
Okay, so having said that, it looks like we've all got a clear idea of where the money would potentially be coming from. At this point, we are considering the approval of a fee waiver for $255.38 for, um, a community benefit cause, and we're looking for a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the $255.38.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion from councilmember Brolio, a second from councilmember Sharato, looking for, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Tiscornia?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Okay, five votes. Thank you. Moving on to.
Can you just share one, I know it's out of line. Can you share one thing? The reason we put this website up is to draw people to the website, the banner, because that's where they can, we, like, the Angel Camp Museum and Hospice and all the different organizations have their volunteer opportunities posted on there, and so that's where people can find their passion and go be fabulous and just do their thing. We don't keep data, you know, pretty much, um, we just, we don't wanna hold their hand, we need them to be independent volunteers, but that's why we put the banner up, so we can draw people to find, uh, things that interest them to do. So, thank you for that.
I wanted to tell you also that I had not visited your website, I did today, and I thought it was pretty neat that you can see all the volunteer opportunities there and what they.
We would love your feedback. You know, anything that's wrong with it is my fault because years ago, we realized that what was missing was the connection, the connective tissue, um, between the volunteers and those that needed their help years ago, and we went, we need a website. Well, so Marty, you're gonna do that? So anyway, I found somebody that. So anyway, I found somebody that, that did websites, but I was too involved with it. I didn't want it to become laborious and costly because we are the volunteer center. And so I put a lot of roadblocks on it, you know, and I said, we don't want to hold their hand. They have designed an application so people could sign up. I go, people don't want to sign up. They just want to see something, go, I can do that and go be that.
Do you have volunteers to, because we've been getting questions at the city hall about volunteers that want to maybe cut wood and provide it to seniors or people who can't afford firewood?
Well, we don't have volunteers. People sometimes think we're like a taxi service. I call right and I order somebody.
But are you aware of anyone who's doing that?
On the Nextdoor app, in Rancho, it's all over the place. People say, I've got downed trees, I will cut them up and I will deliver them to you.
Well, I'm just thinking with those storms, we have a ton of downed trees and they're on private property and they don't know what to do with them. And they're not our responsibility. And so we, we can't take them for them, we can't chop them up for them. So it's trying, and they may not be able to afford someone to come and get rid of the, the tree debris. So, there is oak, so I'm just trying to figure out if there's people in the community that would be interested in doing that, and then there's people in the community that need the firewood, that might be an option.
Well, somebody, a few people have put it out there on the Nextdoor app saying, I've got wood or I've got a trailer if you need to haul something away. And somebody said, I've got an old wet piece of carpet, can you take it for me? Things like that. It's happening and it's all over there. So I would recommend they do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marty, for being fabulous.
For what?
For being fabulous.
Could you just bring us your banner?
Oh, well, Gold Electric has it. Oh, no, 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 no. Gold Electric doesn't have it. Gateway Press has it. He's checking the seat, the corner of the ground. You need it, Gold Electric will pick it up from, that's what he said.
Okay, so we're gonna pick it up. So we're gonna make it six C, which is the overview of the Brown Act changes for 2023. Throwback.
Okay. So there are several changes that are happening to public meetings.
Yes.
New legislation went into effect on January first. So the COVID-19 state of emergency will end on February 28th. So that item that we keep having on the agenda that allows councilmembers to remote it and all that stuff, that, that will be ending. However, what will be replacing it will be new options. So, the first thing is you can hold, we can hold remote public meetings without identifying each teleconference location. So, and you don't have to make each location accessible to the public. But it's only used under limited circumstances and that expires January first of 2026. There has to be, if there's just cause or emergency circumstances. So, if you have a childcare issue or caregiving of a family member, if you have a contagious illness that would prevent you from attending, if you have a need related to a physical or mental disability, if you're traveling while on business of this legislative body or another state or local agency. So, okay, so the thing is, is that you have to notify this board at the earliest possible opportunity, including at the start of the meeting. So if, if, if you're gone, you have to say at the very beginning, of the need to participate remotely, you need to give a general description of why, and it needs to meet one of the criteria that I just went over. And then you make that request of the body, and then there would have to be a vote to accrue.
At the very beginning, at the very beginning?
Yes. You can only use the just cause provision for two meetings per calendar year. And you cannot use that provision for more than three consecutive months or twenty percent of the agency's regular meetings. So if we, if we only met once per month or two times per month, you just figure out what twenty percent of the meetings are in months, that's it. And then, let's see. So, if you, so if you meet all that, you guys vote on it, you say yes, we can do that, or we'll allow you to, to remote attend. The member who is remotely attending has to have their camera on. Yeah, audio. You have to provide a way for the public to hear and see and address that legislative body. And we must provide notice on how public can access the meeting and offer comment. I think that it's good to have online meetings just because it, it can help the public who maybe it doesn't work within their schedule to be here to still participate. Or if they have kids at home or, you know, whatever their circumstances are.
Or a parent or whatever.
That the public can still participate in the meeting. The rules about attendance really are geared around the council members themselves or the board members. But I think continuing to have the public meetings, I think, is extremely beneficial for the public. And then our agenda has to identify the opportunity for the public to attend and directly address you through a call-in option, which we have available, an internet-based service option, which they can put a comment in the chat if they need to, or they can come to the podium and put that. Maybe give them those three options right now. You cannot require comments to be submitted before the start of a meeting. We don't, anyway, so. And the public must be allowed to make real-time public comments. So if we said, you know, we're not going to allow anyone to make any public comments until the end of the meeting, after all of the items are done, we wouldn't be able to do that. So if there's a disruption to the meeting broadcast or the ability to take call-in or internet-based comment, then we, we can't take any further action until the issue's resolved. That is a problem.
Problem with our technology.
So, we'll just, I think we've been pretty good so far.
That's whether or not, that's regardless if we have a council member zooming in, it's just if we continue with membership of the public to be able to call in.
Yes.
If we have a glitch in our system, we would have to pause our public meeting, and that's not good.
So, we have resolved whatever issue we weren't having, because it seems like we haven't had many connectivity issues here.
I want to say it's more so when we have a fuller house.
Yeah.
So there might be more people on the wifi. So, we can maybe set up a specific wifi just for the meeting or look at getting...
But are they on wifi here?
I don't know. I'm just saying.
Because it's not, it's not, if they're, if they're at home, yeah, if they're at home, it doesn't impact the connectivity.
Correct.
Correct.
No, when we have a full house here is usually...
That's when you've noticed the problem?
Yeah. Or weather, you know?
I was gonna say weather is sure.
Weather is the other thing, yeah. So we, yeah, we may need to, to figure that out.
Well, staff, you know, we have a lot of staff that are on the wifi. So if they're in-house, I don't know, I was just thinking it was a lot of people potentially on the wifi.
I don't see that they're, I just pushed them up, they're locked. There's Angels Fire, 5G and 2.4, 2.48 Hz. They're both locked.
Right, but if we have ten members of staff here and they're on...
Right, exactly. So we need to tell them, where's Nate? Meeting time, meeting time, no streaming in Netflix.
We've already crossed that bridge, yeah.
Yeah. So, so we'll just want to be mindful of that. So if we are having connectivity issues, we may have to look at expanding our bandwidth here or not permitting public wifi or not allowing people to use the wifi while the meeting's going on here. So we'll have to kind of cross that bridge, but that's just something to be aware of. And then we also have to implement a procedure for receiving and resolving requests for reasonable accommodations for individuals with disabilities. But we have, we have single floor access, so there's not many issues with that one. The other thing is if we, so if we had documents that are distributed to all of you less than seventy shards before the meeting, they would have to be distributed to the public at the same time. So we would have to make copies and have them available here for the public, and also we'd have to have that as a attachment within the meeting itself. Is this one here about the eighteen years or older?
That is...
Someone in your home?
Member purchasing their most...
Was that because of a closed session?
Open session, why would they get in?
Any time bigger here, you can come to the meetings. Yeah. I'm not really sure why that is there. That's a weird one. Yeah, but if, I mean, yeah.
She's kind of declared to somebody in the room.
Yeah. And then there is some debate in terms of it just putting the materials online is adequate. The court is saying that still doesn't make the Brown Act for this.
That's something?
No, for the materials. So if you got handed, you know, a bunch of forms and we put them online and say they're, they're online, they're saying that still doesn't make the Brown Act. Because if we had members of the public sitting here, they don't have access to them. So we still have to, we have to pull. And then Cal Cities is still working to resolve some of the issues that are in here. And then the other thing, and we really haven't had these issues, thank goodness.
We're losing. We just lost our connection.
Oh, there you go. It's got someone knocked on the, sorry.
I did because I read the back of the threatening behavior.
Yeah, so if, if we, so they cover disruptive conduct in public meetings. So there's been a rise in disruptive and threatening behavior in public meetings. So they, legislation passed SB 1100, and that would allow the presiding member of the legislative body conducting a meeting or there does need, so usually it's going to be the mayor or vice mayor to remove someone from disrupting the meeting. I think there's been a concern about removing disruptive, disruptive public from meetings that you're violating their right to have a public meeting. But if they're being disruptive of the public meeting, we have the authority to remove them. Generally speaking, we don't have a lot of controversial items on the agenda. If we did, I would generally recommend we would just have Scott or someone from the police be here and that you could just kind of...
Give them a nod.
Give them a nod, yeah. And, you know, get them out. So there's that. However, thank goodness, I, since I've been here, I've not seen that level of disruption. And that's about it. So I mean, I think the biggest thing is, it's, it's that you still have the ability to remote in. There's also a, it's the majority has to be here though. Listed in here.
So no more than two people could be attending virtually at one time.
I think not, I believe so. I think it's, yeah, I think it's majority, so no more than two can be out. So I would just make sure if, if one of you, you know, if, if two of you are traveling for work and then one has a...
Childness.
Childbirth issue, perhaps you're sick, that would be three. We would not be able to legally have a meeting. We would have to cancel the meeting. So just be aware of that, and then we'll just try to make note of that. But yeah. So that's the biggest thing, and it's, Rose will do her best trying to keep track of how many, how many just cause provision each council member does, but just we appreciate if you kind of solve regularly too. So it's just two of those excuses per year.
And we can miss a couple meetings a year too.
Yes.
So I mean, that's...
This doesn't preclude you from just not showing up. Yeah, if you're on vacation.
Yeah, right.
Or definitely, yeah.
But it's, you can't remote in.
Turn on the camera. We want to see you.
Right. It's really interesting if you're sick in bed and you're like...
And you have to have your camera on.
Nate just wanted to miss that.
Audio again.
Yeah, right? Audio again. Yeah, sick. Maybe they'll regret that.
I feel like at some point, yeah, maybe.
Yeah.
Any questions?
It's interesting because we have to sit through this with each of our, at least I've had to, with each of our committees, and the interpretation of each committee has been slightly different. This one has been on par with COG. This one sounds exactly like COG, but I have one that was like, you can miss no meetings. I'm like, that's not...
No, no. You can't miss meetings.
If I have COVID, you don't want me here.
Right, that's why this is here.
Yeah. And within, you know, within each bylaw, within the bylaws of each body, it stipulates, it stipulates a lot of that in terms of how many meetings you've missed and all of that anyway. So this just has to do with, you know, the legislative body or agency and what the rules are with that.
When was it going to be effective?
January first. But because we're, the COVID goes through in February, we're running under that one until that one runs out because that one's a little more crazy.
Right.
And then we'll go.
If that one gets extended, I doubt it. Okay. Thank you for that.
Public comment.
Oh, moving on, sorry, we need to have public comment on this item for the Brown Act changes. Any members of the public, Rose? Gretel, you don't have any comments on this?
None?
Okay, so bringing it back, it was just an overview, so thank you for that. And moving on to item seven, administrative report.
Okay, so just to give you an update on the storm damage and what's been going on there, we're continuing to have briefing meetings every morning at eleven, Saturday week. In addition to that, I've been on a daily public information officer briefing with the state at two, I think. I've also been on meetings with regards to housing and for the unhoused, so kind of addressing homeless in the county and providing information to them so that they can get services where they need them. Today, we had the Red Cross at Uwe Park distributing cleanup supplies, and they will be back out in the county on Thursday. This time, they'll be in Feeny Park, Mountain Ranch Community Center, and at Jenny Land Firehouse. That's all on our website, and I also posted it on Facebook as well. We have kind of...
We have kind of extensive, there's been extensive urgency closures and openings, lots of downed trees, lots of road damage throughout the county. In terms of the city, we have road damage on the Greenhorn Creek Road. We had some concerns on Murphy's Grade Road, and we had concerns on Bird's Way as well as Pennehead. So I worked on submitting our initial damage estimates with regards to roads to the Department of Transportation, specifically the roads that they care about, which would be federal aid roads, minor and major collector roads. So that would be Grade Road, 49. And so we had a lot of trees that just kind of impacted everything, so a lot of emergency cleanup on all of those. Engineering came out and did some initial assessments on Murphy's Grade as well as looked at Greenhorn Creek, so he's working on some ideas with those.
Is Greenhorn Creek a minor collector?
That's a major collector.
It is a major, okay.
No, it's a minor collector.
Is that valid?
Yes, for under DOT, yeah. What else? Lots of flooding. I think overall, there was like, through countywide, I think we went through like 200 tons of sand. I don't know where all the sand goes, but there's going to be a lot of block, block, all of our county.
One stack at a time.
We have identified some things that we need to fix going forward, just so it would make it easier. For instance, we have a list station that doesn't have a transfer switch, and when the power went out in Greenhorn, that made it extremely difficult because there was no power. So we've worked very closely with county OES in putting task requests to them to get some assistance. I don't know if any of you looked at Uweck Park. After that wind, it looked like a tornado went through there.
Took a worse than.
Poor them all. We worked with county OES. They tasked the Velocido crew to come in, and you could have a wedding there right now. They did a really, really good job. So in addition to that, they've helped fill sandbags and have them ready for people to come in and get those. And it's not just Angels Camp residents that are getting that sand and sandbags. They're coming from everywhere, just trying to get them where they can. So we've had a lot of sand delivered from Caltrans and from Public Works. We've had the Department of Water Resources get us additional sandbags. So it's been a really collaborative process, so very happy with that. We submitted the declaration to the state OES, so we're on the list in terms of state aid. We were added to Governor Newsom's letter to, to the president, to add us to the emergency and for major disaster declaration. Haven't heard about yet. As of today, we're still not added to that declaration.
To the state, went to-
We are for the state, not of the state.
Okay, state, come up for the, go ahead.
And at this point, as of yesterday, there's only three counties that have been deemed major disaster. Major disaster is where hazard mitigation grants come in, as well as public assistance and individual assistance. So that is not on the table for all of the other counties. I think almost every, it's almost every single county that has declared. But as of yesterday, only, I think 41 are still not part of the major. They're only part of the emergency declaration. The emergency declaration mainly takes care of the emergency opening and closing and immediate kind of emergency preparedness measures. Not any, like rebuild grants or anything like that. So we're continuing to work very closely with our county OES and with state OES to try to make sure that we can get on that major declaration. The cumulative cost to date county-wide is over $2 million in, just, just not in terms of repair damages, but in terms of just expenses related to everything that we've all had to do. And that is more than the 2019 or 2017. And both of them were major declarations. So we're not entirely sure why it's more difficult to get this one, but we're just continuing to work together and trying to get that to move forward. But that's where that is. We still have one more storm coming in, and then we should be, have a, have a break.
Is this the one tomorrow night?
Wednesday, yeah. Yeah. It is going to be very cold tonight, so expect ice. So that's kind of the next danger that we have, is a lot of icy roads. And so that's something that will, that creates a whole nother slew of concerns and issues. So that is the storm. Any questions on that? In terms of strategic plan update, I got the draft that ended last week. I have not had a chance to review it. The, I will be working with department heads to kind of take an initial review of it, just to look at it, see what's in there. And then we will put that on the next agenda for overall council review and see if you guys have any other questions or changes or concerns with it. And then next meeting, we will be doing the financials and budget, mid-year budget adjustments and all that good stuff.
The kindness.
Oh, and next meeting is kindness, so that will be on the agenda. I remembered from my first meeting to put it on for this one.
I haven't on my email.
Are you counting on your one year?
Yeah.
February.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I had an email from Jim, and then it was just gone. I didn't know where it went to. I just, I saw it, and then it's, I was actually right here, I have it on there, too.
No, I made it out back then, and so I added it back then.
Which she was very impressed with, and grateful for.
He's all, wow, we'll do that. So, yeah, so kindness, and then we're continuing to get damage. Oh, face also on the storm update. We're continuing to get damages from individuals and continuing to relay that information to county OES and, and the, the other agencies that need that information to try to get people help. Thus far, I think almost every person who has responded does have insurance. The issue is, like, they might have a really high deductible on their insurance, and they have a tree, you know, or several trees that have fallen, and their deductible's like $4,000, and they just can't afford it. So that's kind of where I'm like-
Is that where FEMA stuff's in, or we can't yet because we're not declared?
No.
Gotcha, no. I know. But there's, what is there, well, just loans available?
Potentially, but, and so that's why I'm, if we can find, because I know there's people that come into the city and ask, you know, whose wood is that over there, or, you know, we're trying to find, you know, find places to get wood. If we can just-
Now get that.
Now get that, then problem solved. There's a lot of trees down. I mean, there were a lot of trees in homes.
There were, oh, a lot. The building downtown, the old saw shop, is that just toast?
Yeah.
The whole backside is, for sure.
So, so on that note, the building inspector has gone around and specifically done damage assessments, and if they are uninhabitable anymore, then he's writing it up. That way, I'm signing off on it, and then we're giving it to our staff to go ahead and work through a suspension of water and sewer services because they are not going to be good. And that is permitted, that's why we made that change.
We're all in, too. Awesome.
So, yeah. That's, um-
How's our ordinance lady doing? Do all this with the code compliance?
Has she been in here, or the code compliance?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, she has. We, we, I kind of made the executive decision to not issue code compliance violations over the holidays.
Over the holidays.
It's, I thought that would be me.
Your heart grew too sizey.
And then the storms came, and so-
It took care of itself, things blew away.
Or created more of us.
Oh, right, because the dump day we had, too.
Yeah, how was that?
Which we went out there, because I watched the radar, and I saw there was a half hour, it was not going to be raining. So I threw the mattresses in the truck, and we went down there, and it wasn't raining at that moment, but it did not look very busy.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, yeah.
Yeah, it was raining.
Yeah, yeah. So- And those kids were just like in all their rain gear, just like miserable. Yeah. Maybe we need to hope that they redo that.
Yeah. Yeah, I looked at stuff, too. I'm all, it can just- Yeah, so we'll, we'll have to figure something out. Yeah, and then, um... Yeah, so Irma is, is coming up again. She is-
What days is she there?
She's here on Thursdays.
Thursdays, okay.
So she's working through the items that she has, and also now we have some new ones.
And the priority list?
And the priority list, yeah.
You said Thursdays?
Mm-hmm. And I think that's it for me.
Okay. Council report.
We'll start with- Sure, I had a museum meeting. And so some of the things we talked about was, they passed a new fiscal year budget. The Sierra Railway, that is like the little miniature train that's in there, they're looking, they're, they're looking at finding somebody to repair that, and they think they've got a good lead, which is great. They are purchasing a smart TV with a stand to do their lecture series with and have it actually down in the main museum with all the wagons.
Carrying around.
And then the lecture series has been going on, and they have a new member on their board. If it's her name, it's escaping me, I think it's Janie. And she's been putting together a lecture series for children and parents of Calvarus County. So she's got a great calendar, and it's starting in May with Jump Into The Museum, and then June, Strike It Rich, July, Join The Fire Brigade, August, The Real City Of Angels, and The Art Of Bartending And Trade, and The Creation Of The Flat Currency, or yeah, currency. Anyway, there's some really, really inventive good things happening over there, which is great. I think having more kids coming into the museum is definitely a plus. But they're having, they've been having a great year. They're doing a fundraiser, they're targeting a fundraiser for an April event, the Andrew Giliardo update. And then they're also looking at doing a Night At The Museum fundraiser as well, which is a fundraiser, fundraiser, yeah. So lots going on there. We are looking at, and I proposed to Martin that we get an MOU between the city and the foundation, just so we know who's responsible for what, and what lanes everybody stays in. And so, because there's a lot of things that come up in this meeting, is that the city's responsibility, or is that our responsibility? So this will help kind of just get that organized. There's that, and then-
How bad, how bad was their sign?
It's really bad.
Yeah, the one side was good, the other side was-
It has to be right.
Does it?
I was looking at, trying to figure out, like, how is that even up there? It was a whole wooden frame, and it just blew it off.
Under that rock, it just cracked.
Oh, and then the rock.
Billy found a piece of it out on the road, and he like, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's not, it's not, yeah. The other thing with the Central Sierra Economic Development, the High Road Transition Council is the planning body for the Eastern Sierra Surf Program, and they have an application out right now, and then-
I'm still trying to understand, like, what that is, though.
Were you on that email? Because if not, I can send that to you.
Yeah, I, I read it.
Yeah, I don't know either.
And I'm still not entirely sure.
We can, we can email him. We'll call him.
I need it in layup terms.
Don't forget, don't forget.
The WAC meeting was canceled in January because they didn't have all their stuff that they needed, so that's being moved to February, but that's going to be on you guys. And then the Solid Waste Task Force is coming back together, and our meeting for the first of the year will be next Monday. I have put my application in, I have to, you have to apply to that every year and be appointed by the supervisors, so they have my application. So that should be coming to them on Tuesday.
Okay.
And you have to do yours, too, as a backup. That's my alternate.
I think so.
Something was emailed to me, and I figured that and said that again. I'm considering that to be an application.
Yep.
Okay. Councilmember Moncada.
I don't have anything to report. It's been a quiet month.
Vice Mayor Moncada, sorry.
Yeah, nothing to report, other than I did attend the UWPA, is it Water Is Gold? Because I have this title.
Our Water Is Gold, yeah.
Yeah, which I thought was very informative, and I really enjoyed it, and felt it-
Really well done.
Yeah, extremely well done. But we have on Code Monday, which I am not able to attend. I think you're, if you can, attend that.
What is it?
Last Code Monday.
This month.
Yeah, the 23rd, 3rd, I think. And then Cog the week after that, February 1st.
Which you can-
I will be there for that, yeah.
I think I can do it. Mr. Benoit, email me.
And it's very difficult to attend that in-
Is it Friday?
Six o'clock.
Six?
Yeah, six o'clock.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's at the county store, right?
Yep. I can forward you all this up, too, if you'd like.
I will.
Okay. That is my report. Just nothing, so.
Today, I had UWPA budget meeting, and without giving a whole lot away, because we got to go through our actual full committee still. Things are looking pretty good, so, and there's some really interesting stuff coming up, so I'm excited about that. I also attended the Water Is Our Gold for UWPA, and it was pretty amazing. I've actually got a lot of community feedback from a lot of people. It was really exciting and good.
Is it on our website? Is that on our website, the city's website?
He said it was going to be up the next day, and I didn't see it get posted.
Yeah, I'll have to look that up. Somebody else asked me about it, and they couldn't find it either.
Email me the link, it's the link from the whole meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted the link for the video.
Yeah, people just want to see the video.
Right, I think, I think it's on YouTube.
Yeah, it was, but I think it was, the link wasn't working, there was some-
Oh, okay.
There was something wrong with the link, because I got it texted out.
Okay. And everybody sign up for, there's a tour. I think he's going to try and do a tour, if he gets enough people interested, he'll do a couple tours, so that'd be fun.
Right.
What else? Oh, I just want to throw out to all city staff, fire, police, water, sewer, office, who else, Public Works, everybody. It's been an awesome couple weeks. It's been crazy, the amount of stuff, water that's come down. So flooding roads, all sorts of fun stuff, Caltrans, everybody. Kill them, good job.
We're all tired.
Oh, my God.
No way, why?
The last three weekends I've been out, yeah, it's been awesome.
I just laid my phone, like, to my head, it's all ding 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 ding.
That's all I have.
Okay, councilmember to Scornia, anything to report?
I just am going to the CPBA meeting tomorrow, and that is it. All I have.
Okay. I have, just like everybody, I attended the UWPA video presentation. That's really all I had to report. I don't have much going on either, other than the storms and all of the fun stuff that's been going on. And I think everyone has been doing a good job, countywide. It's, it's been a struggle. We have VACO, we have UWPA next week. And that's it, that's all I have to report. Okay, item number nine, correspondence. We have the 2022 Consolidated Staff Report for the month of December. Anybody have any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 10, calendar, Rose.
So I am going to create, as I said last meeting, a separate calendar. I'm going to invite you, so you guys have all your invitations, so it'll pop up in your calendar through your email.
Oh, you're going to do it on SharePoint?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Good.
So, and then the other thing, too, is the Form 700, you make sure you're.
Right. Did you email that to me?
No, you got to go online.
You got it from whoever.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
FPD.
It was like an official.
Yep.
I got it, and I looked at it. Would we have to do that much?
I know, we were saying, I forgot about it.
On April 1st.
Okay, no problem.
But get on it now, it's super quick, you can recopy what you have in there already and re-sign it, so.
Examine it online from last year?
Yeah. That's the whole reason why I forced you guys to do it online. And then if you need your passwords reset or anything like that, let me know, I'm the one that handles that as well.
I'll probably need that, because that's.
I know, me too. I have like four that I need to change, and then I have.
Keep on me, Rose.
All right, that's it. So thank you.
In advance for how you stick on top of us.
I'll, then I sent you the docs for LabCO.
Oh, thank you.
And then Jen and I are going to Lega Cities.
Oh, yeah, that's.
The stage.
Talk about that.
Tomorrow, I'm going to be down there Thursday.
Well, I might try to, I don't know if I want to drag that.
I sent you an email earlier.
I saw that, I haven't looked at it.
It kind of outlined everything.
Yeah. I got that, I just downloaded the schedule.
Okay.
It's a, it's a council member, new council member, sort of ones that couldn't go because of COVID. Have it gone.
Be awesome.
I'm excited to go to the one where council meeting goes sideways.
I haven't seen the full agenda.
It's, it's on that link.
Okay, then that's what I'll do, just a minute. Thank you for that.
Yep.
Okay. All right, if nobody has anything else to talk about, I think we're going to move on to item number 11, adjournment. For a motion.
I'll second.
A motion in a second, all in favor?
Bye.
Thank you.